Kristen. Kristen. Don't have them fire you up any more than you are. I just walked in and you got it. I was like, oh. I wrote for that.
How are you ma'am?
Oh, I am just fine.
Did you get my email?
I did, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Today is Tuesday, October 12, 2021. The Committee of the Whole is meeting. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, roll call of members.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Moment Purchase.
Here.
Alderman DeCenso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the Tuesday, September 28 Committee of the Whole meeting minutes?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have an Office of Budget and Management contract report, which was prepared and sent by email this week. There's roughly six, nine items, small dollar, relatively small dollar contracts. Any discussion on these list of contracts that don't require City Council approval, but get to our attention because of this list? Just, Mr. Mayor, if I may comment on, there's three relatively small dollar contracts with Office of Planning and Economic Development for the reimbursement for the parklets, $10,000 each. That's where our taverns and restaurants are placing parklets on the formerly parking spaces. And I had one comment from, this is kind of related to this, I hope it's okay to just mention it briefly. There's, I know of at least one tavern downtown that's got a beer garden, but it's not on the street. And so, this beer garden, they're thinking, well, can we get some money to improve their beer garden? Because they're in direct competition to the folks that put it on the street, and they're not paying real estate taxes to have it on the street. They're, we're going to eventually lose parking revenue because it's on the street. And they get, so it's kind of making competition fair. But that's just a thought. Mr. Mayor, think about it. If you want to offer something to those that have always had a beer, outside beer garden, but they don't get the $10,000 subsidy to improve it for their customers.
Yeah, we are taking a look at that. It's to improve outdoor spaces seating capacity, because it has to be related to COVID. So that's one area of beer garden improvements. And then also, I think we had a request for a rooftop. So those areas of potential.
It's all about helping the restaurants and the downtown establishments and others. So any other comments about the OBM report? If not, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the Treasurer's Report. Madam Treasurer.
Thank you, Chair McMiniman. The Corporate Fund in the month of September had a beginning balance of $45,426,188. We took in total receipts of $18,60,534. We had total disbursements in the month of September of $21,227,823, which left the Corporate Fund with an ending balance of $42,258,899. Chair McMiniman, included in that balance is the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA money. The ending balance included in that of the ARPA money is $15,202,700. This concludes my report, Chair McMiniman.
Thank you, Treasurer. So the next item on the agenda is presentations. We did have one request from Office of Budget and Management, Director McCarty, which is to give us a brief report regarding the health insurance plan and the work that's being done by our members of those committees.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've met, I've met most of the Aldermen. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting.
Just a second, just a point order.
I just want to, I just want to ask the City Clerk Frank Lusko, are these our new screens that are up right now?
They are.
I can see this presentation without my reading glasses, so that is wonderful. Thank you.
And there's one in the hallway, too, in case you haven't noticed.
Congratulations, Mr. Clerk, for your efforts to get us new video screens, one, two, three, four, in the chambers and one in the hallway.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for the subsidy to do it.
We've got to get the technology to go with it.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Bring it in step by step.
Good evening, and my name is Jim Cusen. I'm with the Office of Human Resources. I haven't had the pleasure of meeting Alderwoman Purchase or Alderman Williams. So this is kind of a lot for your benefit, but for all the Aldermen, it's a refresher. So it's that time of year where.
So your Human Resources Director.
Yes, sir.
Jim Cusen.
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 Yes.
Just for the benefit of those who are watching on TV.
Yes, thank you. This is the time of year where we start the budget process, and in the near future, you'll see some ordinances related to healthcare. It's a 36 million, 30 million plus line item. So we wanted to give you a little bit of insight into the whole insurance process. So the first slide that we're going to go to just talks about the role of the Joint Labor Management Healthcare Committee. This committee was formed in 2002, and it's just an ongoing concern. There's 12 members, six unions, six non-union. And the role of that group is to maintain quality healthcare and then control the escalating costs. They meet every month, and they deliberate. They're a very knowledgeable group, and they vet out a lot of ideas. And Director McCarty's going to point out shortly just some of the changes that they have proposed over the years, and that those recommendations ultimately come to this body for approval. And from there, I'm going to hand it over to Director McCarty, and he's going to go into the financial pieces for you, and then we'll have an opportunity for any questions you may have.
So we talk a lot around this horseshoe about the Corporate Fund, and that's the one that always seems to get the attention. But the reality is that the City of Springfield has 40-plus funds in total. Health insurance is part of Fund 74, the Self-Insurance Fund. Fund 74, or the Self-Insurance Fund, is really comprised of four components. Health insurance is one of them, but we also have our workers' compensation, our sick payout, when somebody leaves or retires, they get paid out their sick time, comes from this fund. And then our liability, property, and casualty line. So if the city gets sued and we have a liability, we crash a car or something like that, that's covered out of that particular component. Each one of them, in your budget book and in the appropriations you'll see, have their own individual budgets. They also have, if you look at the Treasurer's Daily Cash Report, they also have separate cash balances that are accounted for individually. As Director Cusen pointed out, this is a major cost center for the city. And the way it works out, and it's been like this for a very long time, the city picks up 75% of healthcare costs for employees and retirees. The employees and retirees themselves, the participants, they're responsible for 22.5%. And the remaining 2.5% of the cost of the program comes from rebates, subsidies, refunds, that type of a thing that we get back. As you all know, healthcare costs go up quite a bit each and every year. I just looked up before I came here what the expectations are over the next, say, seven to eight years. And CMS, which are the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, they're projecting an annual increase of roughly 5.5%, which honestly is lower than I thought it was going to be. We've seen, I've been here 10 years now, we've seen periods of, on a national level, a United States or US level, of somewhere in the 8% range was the norm there for a little while. So it's come down a bit, but still 5.5% is certainly more than the cost of living adjustments that routinely are cited, CPI. So what have we done as a committee? As Director Cusen pointed out, we are a committee made up of both labor and management that work cooperatively together, and it's a program that works quite well. I've been very pleased with how that program has worked, and I do believe it's a model that others have asked about. Well, here's just a few of the things. The implementation of the near-site clinic that's in place to try and drive costs there at a fixed cost, rather than going out to the individual options that are around town, some of which are more costly to the program, to the city, to the participants. Years ago, some of you were around for the elimination of a pharmacy-only program that was in place. It was extremely costly, and it was something that was certainly out of the norm. I think we were the only ones really doing such a program. That was eliminated. We implemented a high deductible program or plan a few years ago. Was it about three, three years ago? Does that sound right? About three years ago, implemented a high deductible plan, which of course, there are a lot of places, that's all they have. We don't. We have more than that. We have a couple of other options as well. Changes in plan design, that's your co-page, your deductibles, what the participant is responsible for. One of the things that we certainly could provide if anybody wants to see this, routinely we benchmark. We benchmark ourselves against our comparables, what's out there, you know, the Rockfords and the Peoria's, the Bloomingtons, that type of thing. And one of the things that jumps out when you look at that is that our program is more generous. It's a very generous health program that we have here at the city. And one of the things that we've tried to drive is moving that more towards benchmark. We're still behind when it comes to this type of thing, but we have made progress over the years in getting more towards that, and that's one of the things we continue to look at. Because ultimately, that cost is borne by not just the taxpayers, it's borne by the participants themselves. So you do that because you want to try and drive consumerism, which is on the list. You want to try to make people realize that to not quote-unquote "waste services" and to say, go to the clinic instead of going to a doctor's office, or go to a doctor's office instead, like an urgent care instead of an emergency room, which is much more costly. Those are the types of things, types of messages that the committee's really worked hard to get out. And to, to some degree, people have been responsive. I think it's been, you know, fairly successful. Not everybody's doing that, but certainly progress has been made. And then also, one of the things that we've really put an emphasis on over the last few years, especially is a wellness program. Trying to do things, we have Fit Club challenges, that people go out and work out, those have been successful. We've seen people that have participated, lose weight and get in better shape. We do nutritional things. We do simple things like put water fountains in our buildings that people can fill up water bottles with. Those are the types of things that we're focused on doing. To a large degree, a lot of this effort has been very successful. Again, you want to talk about premiums. Here's the premium history, just over the last five years. Participants who are responsible for 22.5% of the program, this is how they make those payments. They are charged a premium, depending upon which program they want to go into, whether it's the basic, the POS, or the high deductible health plan. And there's your, your history. And if you look at the premiums and what they are, you can see they've been relatively flat, at least over through a few years. And that's because the committee's been so successful. While others were seeing 6% to 8% growth, ours was fairly stable. It was maybe 2% or 3%. There have been a couple of years, which I'll show you here, where the cost of the program has gone down. So if you look at the red line, that's the total cost of the program. And then the blue, remember I mentioned earlier that the city is responsible for 75% of the program, that's the blue that's up there. So for instance, in FY '21, last year, the total cost of the program was $33.5 million. The city was responsible for about $25 million of that. So that's your taxpayers and your ratepayers cover that, whereas the participants cover that 22.5% through their premiums. That's really all we have. We didn't want to drown you in a bunch of facts and figures or anything. We just wanted to give you sort of a high-level interview, because as Director Cusen said, we're starting our budget, we've got a $35 million cost center here that a lot of people, we never talk about. And with this time of year, ordinances will start coming forward for premium increases and potential changes, and we wanted to just sort of, especially for the benefit of the new council members. A lot of the folks that have been around a while, they know this already, Alderman Redpath and Alderman McMiniman, Alderman Donlin. But a lot of you are new and may just not have been exposed to this as of yet. So we thought it'd be a good idea just to do, just a sort of a quick primer for you. And that's really all I have, unless anybody has any questions for either Director Cusen or I.
Thank you, but I'm sure I'll be calling you.
Yeah, you have our numbers. I'm sure you might think of something. We'll be happy to talk to you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting us do this tonight.
Thank you, Director.
And if I may, I'd like to add one more, somewhat somber note. One of our committee members did pass away just this morning, early this morning. So it's been a definite, it took a toll on our group, and we're really sorry to lose him, and we, our thoughts and prayers are with his family.
Who would that individual be, Director?
That would be Sam Sexton. He's been with the city for a number of years. I would consider him young, 55. He's been an asset in any area that we've had, so we're really disappointed to lose him.
In which department did he work?
City of City of Orange Light and Power.
Thank you.
On Broad Street.
Thank you.
This here was not a required report that we receive as a council, but there are certain reports that are required to be given to the council. And so I'm just going to ask, of those that were here in January, does anyone, and you're excluded from answering this question, Alderwoman DeCenso, because I think you'll know the answer.
Oh, boy.
But did we, did we by ordinance require a new quarterly report by one of our departments in January of 2021? And so I'm glad that, Chief Winslow, you're here today, because I'm going to kind of put a little pressure on you, because we passed an ordinance, and Alderwoman DeCenso and I and the mayor were, put this together. It amended the duties of the chief and the command staff officers. And we added a paragraph that stated that the chief of police shall provide a quarterly report to the mayor and the city council on law enforcement activities, statistics, and enforcement actions. I'd ask City Council Coordinator Tim Griffin to give the chief a copy of that ordinance, which we passed roughly nine months ago. And so if you're not, so we did get a report for the first quarter, chief, but we got no report for the second quarter, and we now, we're owed a report for the third quarter. So if you could work on that, and this is a report that goes to the mayor and the council, we'll appreciate it.
I'll be happy to give you one next week. We've actually been working on it. With the NIGRS transition this year that the state is requiring, we have not been able to get our accurate stats. We're in the middle of trying to convert them to UCR, back the old way. While we're doing it, we've been working with the state, we've been working with, our records manager's been working diligently with a crime analysis, trying to get that for you. So I think we'll be able to get you at least the first six months. Those that have preliminary have been done, but they're having to go back and do them by hand because of the transition with NIGRS. So we'll have you at least the first six months next week. So you'll have the first two quarters, you already had the one quarter, it'll kind of be a repeat accumulation, the first six months. They may even have July done by now, but we'll have that ready to go for next week if you want.
Yeah, this was an ordinance passed unanimously by the council, and if in the future you can't produce a quarterly report for any reason, let us know. But try to come up with a substitute report that maybe isn't so statistical, but gives us your view of what's going on out there as command staff.
Yeah. And what we're going to give you is going to change when they convert it back to NIGRS, but we'll give you what we have, and it won't be apples and apples the last year, but it'll be as close as possible again.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, now we're moving on to the ordinances table of the Romanian Committee. We've got ordinances 2021, 239, 336, 337, 365, 370, 371, and 390. Is there any motion or?
I just have a question, Mr. Chair. On the first one, 239, can somebody explain what that does or what the purpose of this ordinance?
Chair.
Madam Conley?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, Alderman Williams, that's an ordinance that I had asked for. I'm holding it because I'm not, I have some concerns about how this ordinance interacts with other ordinances that the city has. I'm not entirely certain it's doing exactly what I was looking for, so we need, this is in response to some, well, to the house at my ward that had a rat infestation that created a significant health and safety hazard for the, not just the people living in it, but the people who lived around it. So still kind of working on different ways to massage that language so that it fits in with what our current requirements are in the ordinances. But definitely establishing a pattern where if you have a situation with a severe, like constitutes a severe health and safety hazard, that you don't have the two weeks notice and then, you know, multiple hoops. It's a more immediate, more immediate reactions and higher penalties.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
You know, the emergency health hazards, which just drew my attention when I first saw it. I'm like, well, this is an emergency, we need to, but I appreciate you explaining.
And that's, yeah, and that's exactly what it's supposed to do, is really draw attention to situations where someone is in an emergency. It's, I mean, this example would be a house that's infested with rats, obviously constitutes a hazard.
Thank you, Alderman Williams. Any other comments or thoughts about the others held in committee? If not, we'll go on to the.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Alderman Gregory.
I just had a quick question on 236 and 237. Have we, Corporation Council, have we made any, any progress on, you know, what we're thinking with these two ordinances? I will say, you know, for 337, you know, out of both of them, I think that one, you know, we probably wouldn't do. I don't think we would have the votes to do that up here. But I am interested in 336 and how it can, you know, be implemented correctly and within the law, of course, for the safety of all citizens, both those who are on the roadways and driving, so.
Do you want me to?
Yes, sir, please. Do you have any comments on 336?
These are ones that are still under review. There have been some new cases around the country relating to these type of issues that we're currently looking at. So it's still being evaluated, basically to make sure that it fits within the, what the city is allowed to do.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you for bringing that, bringing that up, Alderman Gregory. Why? Because I took some photos of some individuals, pedestrians along the roadway today. I was on Route 4, at the intersection of Route 4 and Isles, and the gentleman was one lane into the state highway. And he was on the island after the turn lane, and then there'd be two southbound lanes. So he's out there, and he was out there, you know, the whole 20 minutes I was observing him. And so as far as that, City Council Attorney, could we direct a letter to the Segway County State's Attorney, asking him whether there are any state laws that prevent individuals from being on state highways? It just seems to me that's a traffic hazard, and it's dangerous, it's, it causes folks to not pay attention to the vehicles, and they're paying attention to a human being on there. It just seems like there's a host of issues there. And so that might be one way to get this going.
They shouldn't be in the roadway at all.
That's right.
They should not be in the roadway. They have to cross the roadway to get to the Center Islands. If you look at Stevenson and Sixth Street and Stevenson and I-55, they're out there all the time.
So that's exactly the point. So if we can get some guidance from our State's Attorney or from our city attorney, and we want the, our city police, when they see that situation, to address it. That gentleman was out there a long time today, and it's throughout the, throughout the city and other places, maybe not on the state highway, but on our city roads. So thanks for bringing that up, Alderman Gregory. Any other comments on the ordinances held in committee? Otherwise, we'll go to the ordinances for committee consideration, Alderwoman DeCenso.
Yes, Chair, can I move 2021, 420 to the front of the agenda? It's the, thank you, Alderman Gregory.
So 420 has to do with?
It's the lobbying ordinance.
The lobbying ordinance. Is there a second for moving it to the front?
Second.
Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, will you read the caption?
2021, 420, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Springfield and GR Consulting LLC for professional lobbying in an amount not to exceed $75,000 for the office of the mayor.
Move to consent.
Right here.
So there's a motion and a second for consent. Is there discussion?
Yeah, could we have some explanation on exactly what they're going to be doing?
I can explain.
I'd like, like to hear from the mayor, no offense.
Okay. It was my ordinance, but that's okay. We're going to be meeting to decide exactly what our agenda is, and if anyone has anything that they would like to see our lobbyists tackle, then they should bring it to the mayor or deputy mayor for discussion.
Is that what you, that's your interpretation, too, Mayor?
Yeah, I'd ask Art Turner, who used to be a representative, I'd like him to come forward, as well as Larry Luster, introduce themselves, but that's how the process would work. I explained to him, IML is, you know, our lobbying arm for larger interests of cities throughout the state, but with regards to our interests, it'll probably be more parochial with regards to TIF extensions, CWLP.
CWLP is like the horse side of the barn, because that's already gone. But, and I agree, that was an issue that we should have been using it for, but I just want to hear what kind of things that, that we're going to get from our lobbyists. And I know Mr. Turner, he's a quality guy, and I know he'll do a good job for us. I have no problem with that. It's just that I want to make sure that we're getting something for our bucks. And if you can maybe give us a little headway on some of the things you're going to be looking at, that would help us.
Absolutely. Thank you, Alderman Redpath. City Council members, my name is Arthur Turner. A lot of familiar faces out there, good to see you all. Those who I haven't had a chance to meet, I look forward to working with you as well. We're looking to provide additional support for the City of Springfield on a state level and working to attain resources for the city, any legislative agenda items that the city may be chasing down. And so these are, we're connecting the dots and providing that sort of support to not only the local senator, but our local representatives on this end as well. So all things, we'll provide a weekly and even if necessary, more frequently, sort of updates with any city council members and direct meetings with the mayor. We've already started to talk about our legislative agenda, TIF extensions, and other things that we'd like to address. But we plan on working very closely with all the council members to address your concerns on a state level and very directly with the mayor's office.
Are you representing any other municipalities?
We represent a smaller village and township on North Riverside.
So nothing that would be in competition with us for lobbying purposes?
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir.
Thanks.
Madam DeCenso?
Thank you. And that did play a part in our decision-making, was because there were some other lobbyists that we did interview that had dozens of municipal clients, and that was a concern to us, because as someone who gets calls from municipal lobbyists, you know, I sometimes hear from the same people over and over and over and over. So, you know, we did six interviews, six interviews? Yeah, six interviews with six different groups, and any one of them could have done a great job. But, you know, former leader Turner and Larry Luster, they have outstanding contacts in both the House and the Senate. There's a lot of new members of the General Assembly, and they know them. So this is, you know, an ideal fit for us and what we're looking to do.
Chair.
Oh, also, happy anniversary.
Thank you so much.
She's boxing.
Mr. Donlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, I can't say how excited I am about this ordinance moving forward, working with you gentlemen and your firm. We, you're correct, we did have many groups, six, to be exact, that were quality, and we're fortunate to have that. But we need boots on the ground. As you gentlemen well know, the legislature is extremely organic, and Springfield's lost out on things in the past. I'm not going to go into details, but we look forward to making sure that doesn't happen in the future. So thank you, the best of luck.
Thank you, Alderman. Mr. Hanauer?
Thank you. And Larry, I've known Larry since he was a freshman in high school, so probably before that.
Old.
He was, he was that big when he was a freshman in high school, by the way. No, I'm glad to get you guys on, and Mr. Turner, I look forward to working with you. I just want to make sure that as we go forward. I just want to make sure that as we go forward, we can't let anything else happen to this utility. We just got, you know, we were lucky this last round, and, you know, we just, we've got a lot of money to pay off yet, and I just want to make sure that we're good to go, go there. I didn't know how you guys lobbied for, on that particular bill, but if you guys, were you kind of on our side on that, or were? I guess I should ask that question.
That's what they're going to tell you.
During the last, during the larger energy bill, we mostly just monitored it. We didn't, we weren't really intricately involved in, you know, the crafting of legislation.
Okay, thanks, Larry.
But if I may, those are the sorts of things that we'd like, you know, providing our lobbying service, we'd like to get in front of those sorts of situations, advocate on behalf of the city, be very much involved going forward. And that's the sort of service that we're looking to provide.
Nice to hear.
Mr. Gregory, and then Ms. Purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gentlemen, I've known Larry a long time, and I recently met Mr. Turner when I first started campaigning. I'm happy and also proud to see this, you know. I think it gives us some experience in the State House to really help us go after some things. I know we can pass along some suggestions of what we want to do, so he'll get my two-page list tomorrow on things. You know, because one thing about Springfield, that I think we need to work hard on is that often that we get forgot about many times, and we want to make sure that we go after, you know, especially for the east side, and which is extending even past the tracks that have been written about in our older cities. So, you know, I definitely think that major focus for your group is going to be trying to help us improve the older parts of the city. So I look forward to working with you gentlemen.
Thank you, Alderman. Ms. Purchase?
Thank you. I want to say congratulations, and I look forward to you all advocating particularly in my ward for this TIF extension. So I look forward to working with you very, very quickly.
Look forward to working with you on that issue, Alderman. And the rest of the council as well, on any other issues that may be important. You know, the legislature spends about six months out of the year here in Springfield, and so we don't want them to forget about, you know, the city of Springfield and all the great things that are going on here, and we'd like to just be a part of doing great things going forward.
Mr. Redpath?
Mr. Turner and Ms. Lester, thank you again for coming. One of the issues that we're going to really be combating here pretty soon is going to be our pension debt problem. I know you've heard about it through the legislature, a lot of municipalities are in the same situation we're in, but we need some relief, and we need some relief from the state level. And that's one thing I'd like for, hopefully the mayor will talk to you about that, because that's an area we're really going, we're really going to get our tails kicked here pretty soon. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Ms. Conley?
Thank you, Alderman Redpath. You actually raised the exact issue I was going to ask you about. I don't know if you have any sense yet of what major issues will be pending during veto session, but I'm grateful that you'll be on our side before we get to that, and very much looking forward to working with you. But yeah, the pension issue is, that ramp is steep for every municipality, so I certainly hope there's some energy and interest in working on that, not just from you, but in the General Assembly this year.
That is a very big issue, Alderman.
Yes.
And it's an issue on the state side as well, and it's something that is always at the front of, I think, legislators' minds in terms of concerns, because it's such a big financial drain.
Yeah.
And so, you know, we'll be a part of those discussions going forward, and look forward to working with you guys to hopefully provide some relief on a state level.
Looking forward to it, thank you very much.
Question for Mr. Luster. Did you play with the Southwest Bears in football in year 1999?
Yes, I did.
Okay.
He beat you, didn't he?
He took out our son out of action.
Oh!
Those people ought to know.
Don't apologize, Larry, you're just playing.
It was a shoulder injury.
Sorry about that.
Okay, all right. I just, I thought that was what happened, okay.
It's just a testament of how hard I worked for the city of Springfield.
Right!
On the serious side, I did, you know, I think there was an outstanding request for proposal here, and it really dug into a lot of good questions and asking for information. I don't, I didn't get a copy of the answers that were provided, and so I'm kind of digging into this. I was the only alderman that didn't co-sponsor this, so, and I did get some inquiries about qualifications, and so could we get what was ever submitted by GR Consulting? And for that reason, I'd like it, anyone can ask that it be put on debate, so I'm going to ask that it be put on debate, so we can discuss this some more next week. So that's just a prerogative. So, anyone else, any questions or any further discussion?
I just, I just want to say, when we do get that review of the qualifications and stuff, I just encourage you, Alderman McMiniman, to, sometimes, sometimes the best way to move forward is to get people who you would never, you know, who doesn't have all those things on the paper, and not saying they do, I, you know, I know they've got some good things, but...
They do.
I just want to encourage that, because sometimes, boy, we can find a diamond in the rough and we're not looking for it. So I appreciate your thoroughness though.
They're not diamonds in the rough, they're diamonds.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to thank Deputy Mayor Kathleen Alcorn for putting the process together and the questionnaire and RFP with Amanda Long, of course, and Purchasing, so looking forward to working with you.
Any further discussion?
Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Motion on the floor.
So there's a motion on the floor for it, well, the motion for consent fails because there's one that doesn't go along. We need unanimous for consent, so is there a motion for debate?
So move.
Is there a second for debate? Is there a second for debate? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
CWLP, 2021-400, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE-22-08-45 Cisco Smart Net Renewal with NetSync Network Solutions Incorporated in amount not to exceed $67,625.17 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
There's a motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2021-401, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE-22-08-48 Municipal Center Switch Upgrade with Sentinel Taxologies Incorporated in amount not to exceed $59,000 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.
2021-402, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE-22-08-49 Domain Controller Services with Matrix Systems Group Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $69,386.24 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2021-403, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Piper Sandler and Company in an amount not to exceed $32,500 to act as the placement agent for certain outstanding water revenue refunding bonds, Series 2018 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2021-404, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of an agreement between iBide and Serum Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $389,600 for catalyst regeneration for Dahlman IV Unit for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2021-405, an ordinance approving authorizing execution of a license agreement with Spring River Hunting and Fishing Club for fishing at the gravel pit property for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it?
Present.
Present.
Public Works, 2021-413, a resolution authorizing execution of a letter intent between the City of Springfield and the State of Illinois, sidewalk and lighting improvements on business I-55 and IL-29 from Dirksen Parkway to Segmond Avenue for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2021-418, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of Ford International Tandem Axle Dump Trucks from Rush Truck Centers of Illinois Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $681,620 under state contract number 19-416 CMS BOSS 4-P-8607 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
General City Business, 2021-407, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of grant number 1565-29848 in an amount of $12,706 from the Illinois Department of Human Services, Division of Substance Use Prevention and Recovery for Kids Can't Buy 'Em Here program, and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in said grant funds in the amount of $8,507 for FY '22 for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2021-408, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2021 Ford Explorer four-by-fours from Marl Brothers Ford Incorporated in amount not to exceed $63,180 under state contract number 19-416 CMS-P-11453 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it?
2021-409, an ordinance authorizing payment of $139,095 to Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services Incorporated for renewal of the annual premium for coverage of certain commercial properties for the Office of Budget Management.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2021-410, an ordinance authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $547,242 for payments to the police and fire pension funds for the Office of Budget Management.
Move to debate.
Second.
Motion, a second for debate, discussion?
Mr. Henow?
Yeah, Mr. McCarty, could you come up, please? I'd like to know what our fund balance, what our percentage was, and does that include federal funds, or the, more importantly, the ACA funds that we added to it? Because what I don't want to get into here, and I'm all for going with the supplemental like we've done, but what I don't want to do is, if that ACA money is part of this, then we've got to really think about that, because that's why I kind of like to see all that money kept separate, because we don't get a true sense of what our fund balance is with that money added to it. So what was our fund balance at the end of the year minus?
ARP.
I'll have to get that for you. It was clearly over 20% because the ordinance requires that. I'll get you the exact dollar amount, and I'll email it to you, because this represents the upper end of the cap. So the way the ordinance works is anything over 20%, or, it's the lower of it, whatever over 20%, or a quarter percent of the pilot payment, the electric pilot payment, this represents a quarter percent of the electric pilot payment, so it's over that, and I just can't remember off the top of my head. But as for your question with the, the ARPA money that's out there right now, this is for last year, this is not for this year, so we didn't have ARPA money last year. When it comes to doing that for this year, it won't count towards that, because at the very least, even if it's in there and it's part of that, it'll be under the restricted category, and we don't count the restricted category, it has to be unrestricted fund balance. So that will not be a part of it. This does include, I would imagine, the Cures Act money, the four-point-whatever-million we got, not all of it went, some went to the utility a little bit and a few other places, but that would be counted because that wasn't, those weren't restricted dollars.
And this also includes any of the, we had a lot of unappropriated fund balances that we used, we've used...
It wouldn't, it wouldn't include that. No, unappropriated fund balance is not part of it. This is just pure fund balance as a calculation in the audit at the end of the year.
Okay.
Thank you for that explanation, Director. Any further, Mr. Redpath?
So you're telling us that they're not separated, that they are co-mangled, the ARP money and the other?
No, if you look in the treasurer, even in tonight in her report, she was able to separately tell you, if you look at her daily cash report, you'll see that they are separated. We asked for that to happen, so that everybody could see it fully and transparently, the ARPA dollars separated from corporate, because in the end, you all may decide to send some of those ARPA dollars to somewhere else. For instance, if you do lead service line replacement at the utility with some of it, we'll send those dollars over to the utility. So from that location, it's just a parking spot right now, but from there, we can move it anywhere that you all decide to move it. And it will be, if it's still parked there at the end of the year, that will be, again, under the restricted category of funds, so it will not count towards this calculation.
So Director, will you get us a printout of where the money exactly is, so we can see it in writing?
Yeah, the daily treasurer report, she's got it, she can send it out to everybody.
Will you send that out to Madam Treasurer?
Treasure Boucher, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. There is a report that is put out daily by the treasurer's office, and it actually goes to Corporation Council Coordinator Griffin, you get it every day, and then like Alderman McMiniman has asked that I send it to him at the end of every month, so I send it to him personally at the end of every month. Alderman Gregory, I think you get it separately. So when Alderman asks for us to send it to them direct, we do, but Tim Griffin always has it, and it shows you that on the report daily.
Perfect, thank you.
Any further discussion? If there'd be none, there's a motion for debate, any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it for debate?
2021-411, an ordinance establishing the holidays for the City of Springfield for calendar year 2022.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion, a second for consent, any discussion? There'd be none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2021-412, a resolution providing public notice of regular meetings of the City Council of the Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois for the 2022 calendar year.
Move for consent. Second.
There's a motion, a second for consent, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2021-414, an ordinance appointing Brenda Jo Jacob to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission.
Move for debate.
Second.
Motion, a second for debate, is Ms. Jacobs here tonight? Any discussion on the ordinance? It's on debate, so we'll have another opportunity next week. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it?
2021-415, an ordinance appointing Thomas Osborne to the Springfield Economic and Community Development Commission.
Move to debate.
There's a motion, a second for debate. I believe Mr. Osborne is here tonight. Do you wish to come to the podium and then just introduce yourself, Mr. Osborne?
Good evening, Alderman, my name's Tom Osborne. I'm the new Director of Business Services with Springfield Public Schools.
Well, thank you for being willing to serve on our Economic Community Development Commission. Does anyone have a question or a comment? Where do you come from, Mr. Osborne, besides?
I actually live in Morton, so I drive to Springfield every day for work, but I'll be relocating probably within the year.
Outstanding. Mr., Ms. DeCensio, and then Mr. Mayor.
Mayor, isn't the, anyone on the board supposed to be a resident of the City of Springfield?
Yeah, this is actually a public school district appointment, and so usually they have the finance officers serve in that capacity. And I think they have a parameter in place with residency, but I'm not 100% sure, but as you said, they'll be moving in. But it is a appointment that's referred by the school board.
I think that may be the case, but I think our ordinance doesn't distinguish a member from the school district, so, Mr. Osborne, do you have a home in mind to move to here? Do you expect to move within the city of Springfield, or you haven't made any decision yet?
The requirement by the school, by the school district is, within a year of appointment to the full-time director position, that I'll be a resident of the Springfield School District.
I see.
Right now, because I got hired after the start of the school year, I'm in an interim role, so then, in the spring, when they get ready to make all the administrative hires again, I'll be hopefully promoted into that Director of Business Services role, and then I'll have a year from that time to take residency here in the district.
Well, this is on debate, so we've got a week to think about this, and so, we can study our code language to see how it's worded, and then hopefully you'll be able to serve, or maybe we can make some kind of allowance, given the fact that by District 186 policy, you've got to move into the city limits within a year, is that correct?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. Ms. Conley?
Thank you, a point of clarification, you don't actually have to move into city, city of Springfield boundaries, you have to be within the school district boundaries.
That is correct.
Right, because those are exactly the same boundaries.
That's correct.
Okay, and that's, you have a year from next spring when you, okay.
Yes, that's correct, once I get appointment as the permanent Director of Business Services.
Thank you very much.
Certainly.
Well, thank you for being here tonight, Mr. Osborne, and answering our questions, there's no further discussion, there'll be a vote on placing this on the debate agenda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it, thank you.
I see, no, no vote.
One no vote, okay.
Noted. 21-416, an ordinance authorizing payment in the amount of $22,576.44 to Justin Chance for a total amount not to exceed $22,576.44 for full and final settlement of Risk Management Claim Number AL20210805056.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion is second for consent, any discussion, there be none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
2021-417, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an agreement with Brick Partnership LLC to provide engineering services for the design and installation of a new water chilt generating system, and the required temperature controls and electric design documents for replacement of the existing units for Municipal Center West East.
Move for consent.
Motion for consent.
Second.
There's a second, any discussion, there be none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it.
2021-419, an ordinance approving the appointment of Justin Macklin to the Civil Service Commission.
Move to debate.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for the debate agenda, is Ms. Macklin here tonight? Maybe Ms. Macklin will be here next week, and any discussion, there be none, all those in favor of a consent, a debate agenda, I mean, I'll say aye.
Aye.
Any against, the ayes have it. So, we've now completed the ordinances for review, Ms. DeCenzo.
Yes, thank you, Chair, I'll keep this brief, because I've touched on the subject many, many, many times over the years, to all the people who emailed us today about animal control, or called us today about animal control, please call your county board member, we don't run, we have nothing to do with running the actual facility, but, we are a major funder of that facility, so the developments that have transpired over the weekend are very troubling to hear, these are not new concerns, deplorable conditions at the animal control facility, nothing new there, we are, we need to, down the road, look at private options, because we can't have this, and you've got to be sick of me talking about this, so, I think we need to, once this contract is, way before this contract is up, this next one, we really need to look at putting out an RFP and trying to privatize this, because we are the main funders for this facility, and if you're a Springfield resident who has a pet, you're paying again, so, we've got to do something about this. And, once again, if you called or emailed us today about animal control, please go on the county website, figure out who your county board member is, and call them, because they're the ones who should be taking this to the board, their meetings, and talking about it there.
And, speaking of that, we do have one member of our council that does serve in a advisory capacity, is that correct?
No, we don't.
We don't have anybody now?
Nope.
We used to have two?
I sit on animal.
But you don't sit on the Board of Health, that's also over animal control.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, is that correct, we don't have anyone serving on the Board of Health?
Nope, Roy and I tried.
I tried.
Kristen tried.
It's supposed to be me.
We got bumped.
That's correct, Corporal Counsel, you care to clarify the law?
The, just very briefly, the agreement when the city essentially stopped providing the public health, you know, public health department services, and allowed that to be consolidated with the county, there was a provision within the law and within the agreement that provided that the city would be allowed to have two representatives, you know, through the normal process, in going through the various discussions with the county, the law provides that they could have include, could have increased the board from eight up to 10 to allow for that to be a permanent arrangement, however, when the discussion took place, you know, regarding city appointments over the last couple of years, they went back and looked, and the county board did not expand the board to allow that two-person, you know, two representatives from the city to be permanent. Now, we did ask them to consider doing that now, but they felt that they were not able to do that, so their position at the current time is that the city council, the city per se does not have the ability to have designated representatives.
But they'll take our money.
Yeah, I, you know, it seems that the county is sliding us in this situation, they're not respecting the city of Springfield, and we have to find a way to send a message back, and we try to cooperate with the county in various ways, I think a real demonstrative way is, we give them $100,000 for their Growth Alliance every year, and...
$250.
Is it 250, a quarter of a million dollars every year to their Growth Alliance, and to ask back, okay, can we have a couple of council members on the health board, it seems like a pretty easy ask, and it's not just the county, it's the capital township trustees, and maybe Ms. Purges, you'd like to talk about it, we just having trouble getting a letter from the capital township to allow us to extend the life of our Enos Park Tax Increment Financing District, and that's another example where it seems like the city's been slighted by county officials, and it just, it's just not right, do you want to comment about that?
Yes, I didn't get any cooperation, I would make motions, I asked for the support letter, I had the city to come out and support the argument that we had, and I couldn't even get a second.
So, that's another good example.
For six months, to be exact.
So, the animal control impacts a lot of city residents, and we need to get some cooperation, and I, when, when the budget comes around every so often for animal control, we're kind of stuck in a hard place, between a rock and a hard place, because we don't have any alternative but the existing operations.
But they just give out, they give it out to other municipalities for free, that just came out, what, two weeks ago?
Just...
So, you know, we're paying also for other communities.
Yeah, and so it's a double hit, and so what I recommend we do is, we need a feasibility study to put together the possibility of our own animal control again, but that's going to take a year of planning, I mean, you just can't, you know, snap your fingers and expect to have facilities and personnel and the funding, so, it's a big project to come up with a possible alternative to what the county is providing us, but that's our only leverage to, if we're unsatisfied with the way animal control is handling things, Mr. Henauer.
Well, and I look forward, you know, I made the, I made the comment about doing an RFP for this last time, and I actually had a member of one of the private members come up and kind of rip me because of it, because they said, they know that there's no, no other group that can do it, now, if somebody can step forward, it's something I will look into, but I will say this, that's not an easy job, and no matter what you do, it's not going to be good enough for some of the folks, it's just not, and, you know, we're kind of caught here, so, and I'm sorry, but I am not for, it'll cost us a lot more than $250,000 a year to do our own, and you can't guarantee we're going to do any better than they are.
I believe this year's contract was $286,000. It was up every year.
I don't know, whatever it is, but it's still, it's still going to cost us more than what we pay.
See, that's a, let's get the true financial picture, because we do pay a subsidy of the 280,000, whatever it is, but city residents pay fees counting, amounting to about $700,000, $800,000, so, the real budget could be that seven or eight hundred thousand, plus the 250 subsidy we give, and that's, that's where the feasibility would have to come in, what can we do with a million dollars, or whatever it would be, but it involves, you know, facility and real estate, and really, top operation if we're going to try to do things better than the county, so, let's see, where's this discussion headed?
That's it. I mean, that's...
I'd ask to be recognized a while ago, but I'll wait.
I mean, I think, I think we need to put out an RFP and just see what's out there, see who, if anyone bites, and I think we need a seat at the table now, which we do not have.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, we can take a look at the RFP, the other thing is, I'll go with Alderman Henauer, see if we can talk some sense into him over there, and then the other thing, though, Brian McFadden did notify me that they did vaccinate all the cats over there and did a deep clean, and they're working with the APL on the issue at hand, so, try to mitigate it, and I think the vets coming over, I think, doing follow-up exams with regards to the current situation.
Okay, any further discussion, so we're in unfinished business and new business right now, is there any other unfinished business, if not, we'll go to new business, is there any new business, Ms. Conley?
Thank you, yeah, I just want to remind everyone, or if you didn't know it, the camp out for the homeless shelter will be October 22nd again this year, that's at M&amp;B Heating and Cooling, I actually have a conflict this year, so I will not be in a box that weekend, but I will be supporting the people who are, this is done to raise awareness for veterans, homeless veterans, and certainly it's a great cause, I encourage you to go online, M&amp;B Heating and Cooling has a link on their website or their Facebook page, and support this great organization and the efforts they do, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Henauer.
Real quick, I got, I got quite a few calls about, with the rain the other day, about the grates stopping up and everything, and I just asked the citizens, if you have a grate out by your house, if you guys could do us a favor and rake, rake the stuff out of, out of the road on the, off the grate, public works crews can't get around, I don't know how many grates we have in the city, but there's an awful lot of them, it does provide a lot of flooding of the streets, and, so, I think if we could just ask the citizens to take care of that, that'd be great.
That's a good request, self-help goes a long way. Ms. DeCenzo?
Yes, the Jack-o'-lantern spectaculars this weekend at Washington Park, it's a big draw, it's a ton of fun, I carved pumpkins with my son this weekend, well, actually, I didn't carve anything, but he did, and it was a great time, so I encourage everyone to go out there and make that a big event for the park district, because it's a, it's a big deal, and it had a year off last year, it's their major fundraiser.
If there's no other new business, we're going to, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, just three quick announcements, one is Opert Cemetery Tree Tours this Saturday from 1:00 to 4:00, it's a self-guided tour, and they'll provide you maps when you check in, and then the S.H.A. Tip public meeting is this Monday in the Library Carnegie Room North at 5:30 to 7:00, and then trick-or-treating hours have been set for Sunday, October 31st from 4:30 to 8:00.
What were those, repeat that, please, Mr. Mayor?
4:30 date for trick-or-treating on Sunday, October 31st.
31st, okay, so, we're in the 12th, so that's a couple of weeks away still, that's good to plan ahead. Citizen request to address the committee, is Mr. Sam Arnold here? Please come forward to the, we have to adjust the, can someone adjust, Mr. Arnold's in a wheelchair, we need to adjust the... Yep. I think you've been here before, Mr. Arnold.
Yeah, a few times. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak to you this evening, Mr. Mayor, Alderman, Alderwoman, within last week and a half, I had a house fire over on North Third, which I had moved to, since the railroad damaged the house over on Sixth and Princeton, and knocked the foundation in, I talked about before, but that's done and over with on that, the fire department came out, they hooked up to the fire hydrant, and guess what, no water, so they had to call in two trucks with water, if there was water there, they could have possibly saved at least part of my house, but it was totaled, so, that's, that was one issue, and there's, I talked with Captain Trees, and he says there's three scenarios what caused the fire, but I haven't received the report yet, I just put in the FOI today, and I should receive it within probably the next five to 10 days, and I'm going to have a second opinion, independent investigator come in and look at the trailer, because the hotspot was not, not where an actual flame could get to, you know, from the fire pit, because there was only like a two-foot fire pit, which was about 75 feet away from the house, but, you know, everybody's got their own opinion, and since I've had dealings with the city before, you know, with all due respect, I just don't trust the city, so that's why I'm calling in for a second opinion from an independent fire investigator, you know, from out of state.
Sorry for your misfortune, Mr. Arnold, and I've got members of the fire department here tonight, I think they'll give you a report on what happened with the water, and if the fire safety is reviewing your fire for purposes of your insurance claim, I'm sure you'll hopefully get an answer from fire safety, if that's the procedure, is there anything else you wish to say?
Now...
I think that's the most we can do at this point.
Right, I understand that, now, there is one other issue, which is not particular to that one, 22nd and Clear Lake, right there on the corner, there's a Finston business right there, he's got probably about 10, 15 trucks, they block the sidewalks where I can't get across sidewalks, I got to go out into Clear Lake when I'm over in that area to get to Dollar General, now, that's kind of dangerous for me, and other people, I've called the police department, I've called the traffic warden, nothing is being done, so, I'm bringing it to you to see what yous can do.
Is someone here from Public Works that took the address location? So, it's been noted by Public Works, and they'll get back with you in some form. Okay. Thank you for being here, and I think our next citizen to address the council, thank you, Mr. Arnold, is Mr. Darrell Harrell, is Mr. Darrell here?
He's not here.
Okay, not here, any other requests to address the council, if not, wait a minute, in case we got executive session, any executive session, no executive session, there's a motion, a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.